All right, we're going to call the order. This meeting of the City Council, the City of Crescent City, for Monday, November 7th, 2016. We just came out of closed session. Could you please do roll?
Councilmember Holly?
Here.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Councilmember Short?
Yeah.
Pro Tem Inskore?
Here.
Mayor Gasnow.
Yes, thank you, I'm here. We're going to have Mr. Short lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have anything to report out of closed session, counselor?
Nothing to report out of closed session.
Thank you. All right, we are here at our public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for inappropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. All comments shall be directed towards the entire council. Any comments that are not at the microphone will be off the record and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. The public is additionally allotted three minutes each when they speak on any other item on the agenda. Is there any public comment? Okay. Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment. And we have no reports or presentations. We're going to go on to the consent calendar. We have, how many items? We have, six items? We have council meeting minutes, warrant claims list, payroll reports, cash and investment, reimbursement for sewer charges, and California endowment grant for Find Your Park. Is there any public comment on our consent agenda? Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. Any discussion?
Move to approve consent 1 through 6.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro Tem Inskore?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Okay, we're on next to our ceremonial items. We have item number seven, the Veterans Day proclamation, and that's going to be read by Mr. Inskore.
Are we reading it tonight, or is it just to be read Friday? Do you want it read tonight?
Yeah, you might as well read it tonight, put it into the public record, and then you're going to take it.
All righty, if you have to. City of Crescent City Veterans Proclamation. Whereas the community has a continuing sense of gratitude for those who left the warmth of family to serve the country they love, and whereas there are approximately 23.2 million military veterans currently living in the United States, with 2.1 million of those living in California, and whereas these veterans may have served during World War I, Korea, World War II, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, the Gulf War, or during peacetime, and may have come from different backgrounds, colors, and creeds, and whereas all who have worn the uniform of the United States deserve respect, dignity, and honor for the sacrifices they have given, and whereas many of these veterans now find themselves homeless, disabled, or otherwise bearing shrapnel scars and other burdens, including post-traumatic stress and the memories that never fade, and whereas they are our friends, neighbors, coworkers, grandparents, parents, siblings, and children, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Crescent City does recognize and appreciate all of our veterans, both living and gone, and does urge all of our citizens to do the same and to give full respect for the sacrifices made by these brave men and women in honor on Veterans Day, November 11th, 2016.
Thank you. And thank you for your service.
Blessed.
Okay, our next item is certificate of recognition for volunteer efforts by Dave Emper. Mr. Taylor, I hear you have some extra, you know, enlighten us on this certificate here.
Sure. And Dave Emper, he's a retired United States Fish and Wildlife Service recovery botanist. Dave worked in the business for several years, but he's the foremost expert on the Wolf's Evening Primrose, and as you know, it pops up for us quite often during our projects. We're constantly dealing with this plant. But Mr. Emper, he believes passionately about saving the species. How it's threatened is, there's a lot of garden varieties that are out there that are crossbreeding with the native species, and so they're basically being wiped out through cross-pollination. And so for us, for the city, Mr. Emper's helped us in several of our projects recently, most prominently the B Street Sewer Project, and then also our Coastal Access Project, where he actually volunteered his time to come out, did the rare plant surveys for us free of charge. He actually went out and collected tens of thousands of seeds from known specimens that he knew were pure specimens, came back in the pouring rain actually, reseeded some of our mitigation areas for us. And currently right now, he's working on a long-range mitigation plan for us, for the Wolf's Evening Primrose, that we could use as we move forward for a lot of our different projects and dealing with our coastal development permits. And really, speaking with coastal commission staff, nothing like this has actually ever really been done before, so this is going to be the first time in California. So I did want to recognize Mr. Emper for his ongoing work and all the volunteer time he's given to the city, he's probably saved the city tens of thousands of dollars in fees and costs that we would have had to otherwise put out to hire consultants.
Excellent. Of course, I wouldn't know a Wolf's, what is it? Wolf's Evening Primrose, if I tripped over it, so I think maybe in the future we might have some sort of presentation that would give us a little education on whether it is and where we have it, and why is it important.
Sure.
That'd be awesome. So, thank you very much, and thank you to Mr. Emper for helping out the city we could. Okay, we are now on to our public hearings. We have three public hearings. First one here, and item number nine, is adoption of Code Amendment, Chapter 5.44.030 and 5.44.070. And I guess, Mr. Taylor, you're taking these?
Yes, sir.
One at a time?
So as you recall, this was introduced at the October 17th meeting of the City Council. This is an update to our mobile vending ordinance. The update was attached and strike out and underline. There was no suggested modifications at that meeting, and there haven't been any other modifications presented, so, and if you like, I can go through it again, but otherwise it's the same ordinance as was introduced back on October 17th.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, so we're going to open up the public hearing. Is there any public comment on this Code Amendment? All right, seeing no public comment, we're going to close it on this public hearing. We'll close that public hearing. We'll bring it back to the council for an action. This is our second reading, so we're taking action on it.
Correct, this would be for the adoption.
All right, so we're going to adopt this.
Mr. Taylor, then I would make a motion that we waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt ordinance number 795, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City revising the Crescent City Municipal Code, Title V, Business Taxes, Licenses, and Regulations, by amending Sections 5.44.030 and 5.44.070, Mobile Vending, Approved Locations, and General Prohibitions, and adding Section 5.44.035 Use Permit Required.
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Could you please pull the vote for me?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro Tem Inskore?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. All right, on to public hearing number two tonight, item number 10, Adoption of Code Amendment, Chapter 1, excuse me, 12.20. Mr. Taylor?
So again, this is another ordinance that was introduced in October 17th meeting at 2016, and this is really, this ordinance is just to put in place some rules and regulations just for the safe operation, and kind of just operation rules for our city parks. Again, there was no suggested modifications at that meeting, and we haven't introduced any new modifications.
Great, thank you. Okay, any questions for Mr. Taylor from the, all right, I'm going to open up this public meeting, public hearing, excuse me, and is there any public comment on this issue? All right, seeing no public comment, we're going to close public comment, bring it back here. Anybody want to put a motion up?
Rough crowd. I will move that we waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt ordinance number 796, an ordinance of the City Council of Crescent City, amending Chapter 12.20 Park Regulations, Title 12 Streets, Sidewalks, sorry about that, and public places of the Crescent City Municipal Code.
Thank you. We have a motion, you have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro Tem Inskore?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, we are on to our third and final public hearing tonight, number 11, Adoption of Code Amendment, Chapter 17.18 and 17.19. Mr. Taylor?
This ordinance was introduced at the October 17th, 2016 meeting of the City Council, and this is to amend our zoning code for the residential professional district by allowing SROs, which are single-room occupancy units, by use permit. Again, there were no suggested modifications at that meeting. We were not introducing any new modifications. The ordinance is to allow conversion of existing motels to SRO units or the construction of new units, and really to provide kind of lower income and safe and clean housing in that residential professional district.
Thank you. Okay, any other technical questions for Mr. Taylor? All right, I'm going to open up this public hearing. Is there any public comment on this particular issue? Okay, seeing no public comment, we're going to close that up, and bring it back. Any other questions and/or motions?
Yes, I move that we waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt ordinance number 797, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, amending Chapter 17.48, Special Zoning Uses of Title 17 Zoning of the Crescent City Municipal Code, to add provisions for single-room occupancy facilities in the RP District.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro Tem Inskore?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We are now on to our next thing, which would be a housing authority, but that's not until the next meeting or successor agency. We have no continuing business. We are on to new business. Item number 12, Legal Review of Municipal Code. Mr. Vandemark?
Yes, your city clerk, Kimmy Scott, has been working on this project and has sought some services and some bids for services, and is bringing to you tonight an agreement for someone to do legal review, and I would ask her to present this to you.
Ms. Scott?
Yes, so I originally reached out over a year ago, started looking into this for us, received some quotes from various companies. Basically, a legal review of the municipal code, takes a look at the entire code, compares it to state law, compares it to federal law, to see if there's any incongruencies, because things are continually changing. It also compares it to itself, to look there for incongruencies, and then also looks at best practices of other cities. I sent out an email on the city clerk listserv for California and asked other cities who they've had do this, and asked for some reviews, and by and for, Quality Code came back with about four-fifths support. All the costs were all between $2,900 and $3,900, so they're on the low end, they're highly supported, and I could not find anywhere we have had this done in our past. And it should be done about every five to 15 years. So it's kind of a lengthy process. This is the start. Pardon?
What is that, 150 now?
Yeah, something like that. So this is the beginning. They don't rewrite the code for us. They take a look at it and say, you know, you could do better here, we suggest this, take a look at this, you know, opportunity here. So after this gets done, we would then either hire somebody to rewrite the code, or we would take it piece by piece in-house to rewrite it, which is my recommendation, because then we can make sure that it suits us, but this will kind of point us in the right direction and get us started.
All right, any technical questions for Ms. Scott?
That sounds like a good idea. You know, when we have those laws against buggies going the wrong way down the street.
I know we've been talking about it for a while, so this is the good first step.
Right, yeah, we have a lot of outdated sections, and, you know, we have sections that really are in areas that they shouldn't be in, just we have vernacular in there, you know, where it's very gender biased that needs to be cleaned up. So we have a lot of areas across the board where it could use some help, so I think it's time that we do this.
Do they help with any suggestions, you know, upcoming future instances that might be coming down the pike that they might know of? You know, like, we can maybe rewrite some stuff to make it future-proof if possible?
Right, yeah, they do try to help us. I think what you're trying to say is just make sure that we're looking ahead as well as kind of cleaning up now. So everybody that I spoke with about this company could not speak highly enough of her work, and she really puts her heart and soul into it and knows her stuff, so I believe they'll do a great job for us.
Great. Any more questions?
Yeah. Kimmy, is it a one-person operation, or, I'm just curious if they have an attorney on staff that looks at these things?
Yes, she does have attorneys on staff. She's kind of, there's one person who's in charge, but she does have staff to support her.
All right, any other questions? All right, I'm going to open this up to public comment. Does anybody would like to make public comment on this municipal review? Seeing no public comment, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the council for action or just further discussion?
I will make motion to approve the professional services agreement with Quality Code Publishing for the legal review of the city's municipal code and authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro Tem Inskore?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. All right. Oh, yeah, one last question. How long do you think this is going to take us?
She will return results to us within 90 days, but then as far as how long it will take us to fix everything, I do, I'm not brave enough to estimate that.
I understand.
Your Honor, that will depend entirely on how many things they find to fix.
Exactly.
And some of those, you folks will know, at least a couple of you who are continuing will recognize as ordinances are brought to you to modify those sections.
Right. Well, 90 days is still good turnaround for looking at a city's municipal code. If anybody's been on the web to look at it, it's amazed. Quagmire, all that good stuff. Okay, so here on to item number 13, Budget Actual Fiscal Year 1516. Mr. Vandemark?
Yes, and we're going to bring the numbers, lady, and Director Lynda Lieber up to explain this document to you, because she loves to give you updates on numbers. Before she starts, I do want to tell you, and I believe Counselor Pro Tem Inskore would concur, we just finished having the auditors in-house for a week, really here last week, the week before. Time flies when you're having fun, but they had nothing but good things to say about Linda's leadership of the accounting department and the work that the accounting department's doing, and their responsiveness to all the requests and the work they've done.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Lieber?
All right, we got a presentation.
Oh, it's up.
I can see up there. Do I just click to go over it? Okay, all right. Okay. So as you know, we normally present a budget to actual report a few weeks after the end of each month, and you did not receive one for June, which is normal, because that's the end of the fiscal year. So when the fiscal year ends, that starts a pretty intense process for the finance department. We spend a couple of months reviewing everything, posting a lot of adjustments, doing a lot of calculations. Then we have the auditors come. They were just here in October. They spend about a week going through a lot of documents. What I'm here to present to you tonight is the preliminary results of that. The final audit will not be ready until probably later in December. And so just very quickly, so at the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th, we start all of our year-end process. We have the auditor present the preliminary results, which we're doing tonight, and then the audit will be finalized, and our auditor will come back to present the audit results to you. Okay, so we're going to talk about the operating revenues and expenses. These are basically the day-to-day ongoing operations, and I'm going to go through the five major funds that we're used to talking about. This is not exactly the same thing as fund balance in every fund, because there are certain things that are in operating but not in the fund balance. We'll get to all of that. Okay, so first, the general fund. As you know, but maybe people in the audience don't, the general fund is the general operations of the city government. It includes fire, police, public works, the pool, code enforcement, planning, and administration. So for fiscal 16, I'm not going to read out every number here unless you want me to, but just the highlights. Our revenues were $340,000 more than we budgeted, which is great, and I'll go into where that came from. Our expenses came in $195,000 under budget, which is fairly typical year-to-year based on positions not being filled or projects being put off for a year, that sort of thing. So our net result for the year, and again, this is before the audit is finalized, but I don't expect any major changes, so our net result for the general fund is an increase of about $48,000. So the revenues that came in more than our budget, sales tax came in higher. Sales tax is a little hard to predict, because it really just depends on how much people spend. It's good when we're higher than budget. The sales tax in lieu, that was a one-time bump, because that triple flip ended this past year. We won't have that going forward, but we will have higher sales tax going forward, so it's pretty much a wash. TOT was up, which is great. Part of that is due to the RV park. The residual pass-through, that has to do with the dissolution of the RDA. Again, a little hard to predict. Franchise fees were higher than budget. Those are based on a percentage of utilities that, revenues that occupy our right-of-way. It's not something that we really have any control over. We did receive an insurance dividend that we were not expecting. GSRMA sent us $122,000 dividend that we didn't know was coming, so that was a bump, and that was spread over the funds that pay for insurance. Building permits were higher than budget. I think part of that's due to the CVS, I assume. And then just some other minor, some were up, some were down, and we ended up $340,000 over our budgeted revenue. So where expenditures were down, across several departments, and most of this is related to staff positions that were vacant for either part or all of the year. For example, in the police department, having police officers' positions vacant, there's some, some lines came in under budget for things like supplies and maintenance contracts, and that has to do with projects that were slated to be completed that didn't get finished, and they're in next year's budget. So our beginning fund balance, at the end of fiscal 15, just over 1.7 million. Add the revenues, subtract the expenditures, and we're going to end up at about 1.78 million at the end of this, or the end of fiscal 16. This doesn't change a lot from what we talked about when we had the budget workshop in May. I was estimating that our fund balance would be about even with what it was the year before. It's just a little bit higher than that. Oh, are there questions on the general fund before I move on? Okay. Housing Authority Fund, as you know, it's federally funded. The city basically acts like a pass-through. We take money from the federal government, we run the program, and we send out the housing choice vouchers. Both revenues and expenditures were higher than budget. This has to do with a timing difference, because the federal program is on a calendar year basis, and ours is on a fiscal year basis, so there's just some timing that doesn't quite sync up. Also HUD holds on to some of Crescent City's cash as a reserve, and we have drawn down some of that. So that increases our revenue, because we pulled it from them, but the reason we pulled it from them is to pay out more housing choice vouchers. The budget was to increase almost $15,000, and the actual is an increase of about $18,000. So beginning fund balance was just under $74,000, and after this, after fiscal 16, it's going to be about $92,000. Okay, the RV Park Fund reopened in May of 2015, so just before the beginning of this fiscal year that we're talking about. So this was the first full fiscal year of the newly renovated park, and they did very well. Revenues were slightly higher than expected, and expenses were quite a bit lower. The biggest reason for that is in the utilities budget. They fixed a bunch of water leaks. There are fewer spaces using electricity, so utility costs were down, but revenue was up, so very good. So the RV Park Fund is an enterprise fund, so we talk about working capital instead of fund balance. Their working capital is about $37,000, meaning that's sort of their cushion for going forward, so it's still kind of on a tight margin, but we think that things will go well as revenues continue to increase.
I have one question.
Sure.
Linda, do we have a projection then at what point in time the RV Park Enterprise Fund will start repaying the, whatever it is, $250,000 loan? Have we targeted out where that was going, where that's going to be?
Yeah, the first, it's $230,000 plus, I think it's 1.5% interest, I think we did. And the first payment is scheduled to be this year. It's about $26,000.
Good, thank you.
So the sewer fund did much better than the budget, mostly because of projects that were deferred. Revenue's up $141,000 over budget, and expenses came in $860,000 under budget. However, that's a little misleading, because one of the expense lines is $220,000 that we have to set aside to the capital reserve fund. So we put it in our budget as an expense, so that we don't spend it, but it doesn't show up classified as an expense. So you'll see that on the next, the next slide where we talk- So, you'll see that on the next, the next slide where we talk about the working capital. The capital uses, we had budgeted a little over five hundred thousand dollars in capital projects. We finished almost three hundred thousand, and the rest of it basically was deferred to this year. So, here's where the revenues varied from the budget. There were a few more sewer connections than we had budgeted for. That's something that it's just hard to predict. It just depends on how many people approach us and ask for a connection. The one that you might notice is that the CSA was under budget. However, that's us getting reimbursed from the county for our expenses, so the expenses were lower, so the revenue was lower. Here's where you see that two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars for the Capital Reserve. We budgeted, but it doesn't show up in our expense report. Operations, maintenance, city and county, and lab all came in under budget. Again, there were unfilled positions in lots of departments. We had projects that were not able to be completed, and they're in the budget for this, this fiscal year.
Lynda, before you go on, that, the two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars into the Capital Reserve is not a one-time that we carry forward. It's every year we have to put that much in until we get to some certain level?
Correct. We, we have to set aside two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars every year for ten years. This was our second year that we have done that, and that is a condition of the loan. We have to leave that money in a restricted bank account. We can't touch it until the loan's paid off. It's basically our guarantee to the state that we can keep the plant running, but we're not allowed to use it to keep the plant running. So, working capital for the Sewer Fund, three-point-five million dollars. It was just over three million dollars at the end of last year, so it did go up. However, in our budget for this year, we're projecting to decrease that by about five hundred thousand dollars for capital projects, so we're not actually that far ahead of where we thought we would be. So, the Water Fund, same situation here. Revenues are a bit up, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Operating expenses, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand below, below the budget, and capital uses, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand below the budget. Same, same thing I've been saying. We have positions that haven't been filled. We have projects that are scheduled to be completed this year that we thought would be completed last year. We're ending with a working capital of about seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, which is pretty healthy for the Water Fund. So, just in conclusion, why expenses are under budget? We have quite a few positions that were vacant for part of the year. We have projects that were in the budget for fiscal sixteen that are now in the budget for fiscal seventeen, and you can see the list there. And just in general, budget is always just an estimate. We never know exactly what's going to happen, and we budget conservatively because that's the safe thing to do. We, we estimate our expenses, that we're going to spend every single dollar, you know, every position will be filled, every project will get done, even though we know that probably isn't going to happen, but we budget for it so that if we can get it done, we have the money to do it. The next step, the audit should be completed sometime in mid to late December. The auditor should be presenting to you either at the second meeting in December or possibly in January, depending on how everybody's schedule works. And the next big step for us is we'll be doing a mid-year budget review. Once we get through December and get everything recorded, then we'll be presenting to you the halfway point where we think we are. And I can take any questions?
Any questions? Excellent presentation. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, there's no action on this item, so there won't be no public comment, but you guys got a nice little view of our budget and all the things we're doing right now. So, okay.
Mayor Gastineau, I apologize. I just want to go back to item twelve for one minute because I think it's important to have the record show that the agreement that you guys are wanting to go forward is not the agreement that's in the agenda.
Oh.
It's the agreement that was brought here by Kimmy today.
That's right.
So, anyways, if the public, this is going to be the first time the public is seeing this because it was just.
Okay.
Just taught off the presses today. So, anyways, if the public does want to see a copy of that agreement, they need to.
Then we have it.
Yeah, and it probably should get put up on the, on the website whenever that, whenever that's available, but that was my only comment.
Thank you. Hey, guess what?
Yeah.
We're at the end of our agenda. That was our agendized items. We're at the end. Any legislative matters? Oh, besides everybody vote tomorrow? How's that one? That's a good one.
And read carefully on Measure Q for the sewer rates, for the consumption rates. It is a better, better rate structure for the majority of the ratepayers, so I'm highly encouraging people to vote yes on that.
Excellent. Any other legislative matters? We'll get more into it as we go. I see there a City Manager Report.
Yes, sir. First, you have in your packet a letter from the Coast Redwoods Art Association. I'm pleased to tell you they presented us with a check for, I believe it was five hundred and fifty dollars. Is that correct?
Yeah, it was about five fifty.
Anyway, that, that is what they've collected from the sales of the prints that they've made from the Florence Keller paintings. You will recall that they, they are underway in a project to upgrade and clean up and reframe the hundred and six prints that were found upstairs in a closet in the Cultural Center, and I'm pleased to see that they are selling the prints handily, and they're very reasonably priced. They're twenty, twenty dollars per, per print. I'm pleased to say that my wife and I went to the, the grand opening, and thank you for the invitation, Protem Insgar, of the art gallery on Second Street, and as my wife would put it, "We won." It was a silent auction, "But we won a print." One of the Florence Keller prints at that event. So, anyway, if you haven't been to the art gallery, it's a, it's a pleasure. I hope you will go down and visit that. It's on Second between North and South One-O-One. You probably all know where it is, and they've done a really nice job with that place, and they're just excited to move ahead with their project and process of cleaning up the rest of the, rest of the Florence Keller paintings. I believe they've done fifty of them. It may say in here exactly how many they refurbished, but they said their big expense is going to be purchasing glass for the, for the ones as they move forward. So, they're always looking for ways to pay for those things. Anyway, that was wonderful. The other thing is there's been a request that Public Works look into installing some LED, high-intensity LED lighting, and I'm not certain if it's in the lobby or in the main room of the Cultural Center, but I certainly will get that clarification before they start replacing bulbs, but, but the Public Works folks are looking at that and also looking at the potential of a grant from Pacific Power for changing over to LED lighting that might help us with that process.
Excellent.
The other thing is, we unfortunately were not successful in our grant for the pedestrian upgrades to Front Street, and I'm going to ask our Public Works Director, Mr. Weir, to come up and explain at least a little bit about that process and the, the funding that was provided to other areas for that grant.
And was that the grant that was supposed to go in conjunction with Danco's building from H Street down to Front Street? Oh, it was different. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Vandemark, Mayor Gastineau. So, yes, that's, that is the case. This was actually the grant that we applied for, for ATP funds, the Active Transportation Funds. This is the same funding source that funded the Sunset Circle Class One Trail that the city received eight hundred thousand for. Unfortunately, we were not successful in trying to fund Front Street. This is our third application that we put in for ATP funds to try to fund the pedestrian improvements. This would actually have been the pedestrian improvements on the south side of the street, all the way from the transit hub there by K Street down to B Street. It's my understanding, and although the results are just preliminary at this point, I wanted to let the council know this was the, the scoring decision. We're not being recommended for funding. Doesn't look like any project in District One from at least the preliminary scan of it was funded for ATP. So, everybody's a little bit frustrated with, with, with that, but it's very competitive right now for any sort of transportation funding. This just is an example of it. We do still have our application out, which is in conjunction with the Danco Project, and that would fund the pedestrian improvements on the north side of Front Street between the transit hub and H Street, and then down H Street to, to Ninth. So, I want to give the council an update on that.
Sure. And Eric, when we do these pedestrian improvements, they should, will they stay there if we get the grant funding to redo all of Front Street, or will they be ripped up as well?
No, they would stay there. So, these would be the sidewalks that would be in the Front Street project, so it would be located actually to the south of where the existing street was. This project also included some of the parking areas to separate the vehicular traffic from the pedestrian parking, almost acting like a trailhead to the, to the coastal access. We worked with the local transportation commission. They actually funded Green Dot Transportation to help us put this application together. I think all of us were excited about the application as we really tried to gear it towards this funding source. That's where it's a little bit disappointing that we, that we did not get it. This doesn't mean that, that we're giving up on Front Street by any means. It's just, just one more opportunity to learn how the funding sources work, and hopefully in the future, we'll have more of the funding sources that will really be geared towards the Front Street project.
Eric, do you, are you provided with some of the scoring implications or reasoning behind our failure?
We will eventually. We don't have it at this point. We just have our overall score, which was slightly below the average score, and the, so our score was a, was a sixty-two. The lowest scored project that actually was funded was an eighty-three. So, we're, we're disappointed in the gap between where our project was and where the, the total funded projects were, and we're, we'll, we will intensely look at why we scored that way. I spoke with Caltrans about it earlier today, Tamra Layton, the Executive Director of Transportation. We've been in conversation with this, and so we're looking forward to seeing that scoring.
Thank you for your efforts on that, by the way. Can't get them all. Thank you.
Okay.
One more thing, I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
And Counselor Holly, I want you to note that while you call it a failure, Mr. Weir continuously calls it an opportunity to learn, and we rejoice in that terminology. One last thing, I just invite everyone to drop into the, to the building planning department side of, of the City Hall because it was painted, it has received a fresh coat of paint over the weekend, and it looks dramatically nicer and brighter in there than it has certainly in my four and a half months, but I imagine in a very long time. So, that's kind of the first step as we move ahead with trying to modify City Hall to get the staff that's available at, at desks in closer proximity so we can have a better chance of answering the phone and having somebody there always during the day and not closing the doors as we have to now with the separation of those duties. So, I invite you down to take a look.
Thank you. Okay. Reports, concerns, referrals, travel, training. Who would like to go first? We haven't done much since last meeting.
Go ahead, Mr. Short.
Starting off with, on the twenty-fourth, I believe, Mr. Insgar and I have met with the auditor. It was here a couple of weeks ago. I may be off on the date, but it was the twenty-fourth? Fifth. Excuse me, twenty-fifth. One thing I wanted to echo from something that the City Manager said, that he commented that Ms. Lieber was very impressed, or he was very impressed with, with Ms. Lieber and her abilities to keep our books straight, so I appreciate her efforts there. As far as meetings go, I only attended a couple. I went to the LAFCO and tri-agency and really don't have much to report out of those. Coming up, I have a Transportation Commission meeting that Mr. Insgar is going to cover for me. I will be traveling to see my son graduate from boot camp, so I want to thank him for covering for me for that. It's kind of ironic that Mr. Insgar's a Navy man, and I'm going to be seeing my son going into the Navy.
Would you like me to go for you?
No, thank you.
You can stay for your meeting.
No, thank you. I'll, I'll go on my own. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
But I wanted to be sure and also express my thanks to the three of you that are leaving. Freshman, council member, you kind of, kind of don't know what you're getting into as far as dealing with people in the group, and it was an absolute pleasure working with you three, so you are definitely going to be missed by me anyhow, and that's, that's all I think.
Thank you. Ladies first.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Short. I'm going to miss everyone here too, and the whole team from the city, but I'll still be around to bug you, so. Let's see. We had the airport meeting last Thursday. Trying to remember. It's been quite a whirlwind lately for me, but I can't remember what. I didn't write, take, write any notes. And we also had a closed session for the City Council that same day, and then we had Friday Night Live this last Friday, and it was kind of quiet downtown, but there was still a nice turnout, and we also had the, the grand opening, as our City Manager mentioned, for the new art gallery on, on Second Street, and they've done a really nice renovation job, so I was quite impressed. So, if you haven't had an opportunity to go in there, you ought to check it out, and remember to vote tomorrow, and hopefully you'll get a chance to see other voters when you go to your precincts, or else you may be already voted, so thank you for doing that. It's our civic right and duty to do so, and we have Transportation Commission coming up this Thursday, and, and also Veterans Day to honor all our veterans, and my family's Navy too, by the way. So, anyway, that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Holly.
Thank you. My dad was in the first class of Navy Flyers in World War II. Kind of interesting. So, we're all Navy up here, I guess, in a sense. On the twenty-eighth, I attended the Last Chance Grade meeting with Assemblyman Huffman and Assemblyman DeFazio. It was a, it was really kind of a, I was invited, of course, as the city's representative on the, on the Last Chance Grade Stakeholders Group, but it was, it was a really good opportunity to talk to people in very high places. Mr. DeFazio apparently is the head of the committee at the federal level that will be considering funding, and he is very knowledgeable. I think he's been in that position for thirty years or something, and so he's, he's, he's really a good person to have on our side. Actually, prior to the meeting, they were just, they just came in by helicopter. They had been, they arranged a helicopter tour of Last Chance Grade itself, and you can really only get a sense of Last Chance Grade if you see it from the ocean in, and so they had an opportunity to do that. So, it was a, it was a beautiful day and a very dramatic ride for them, I think. So, I, I know that they're, they're working very hard with transportation monies being what they are. We still don't know how long this is going to take. It, in no uncertain terms, the, the Caltrans presentations from the engineers, it was very clear that it was going to take more than five years, as some people in the community seem to tout. It, it's going to take many more years than that, but, but they are looking at, at specialized funding, and we're anxious to see how this moves along. So, I've enjoyed that assignment, and I would recommend any new council member try and get on that particular committee because it's a, it's a very dynamic group, and they're trying to work ahead to move the timeline along as quickly as possible. So, so that has always been interesting for me. The, I did, on a lighter note, the Rangers Band played with the Delmar High School Jazz Band the other night at an Oktoberfest right downtown here. So, that was fun, and I'd forgotten how much energy these young musicians had because when they quit- And I'd forgotten how much energy these young musicians had, because when they quit playing and we started playing, they were doing all kinds of things out on the dance floor. And it was, it was really fun to watch. I, I, I love that energy and that talent, so we have some really good kids in this community. As we know from the, from the trick-or-treating, we talked about trick-or-treating earlier and, and I'm always impressed with the kids that come to my door. And, and, I don't know, it's a nice, nice function over the years. And I too will be attending, we have an IGRC meeting on Wednesday, as I understand. And I have a senior center meeting on Thursday and then the LTICO, the commission meeting on Thursday as well. So, we're not quite out of here yet. There's some work to be done, but, but it's been a, it's been a good ride and I appreciate your comments, Darren. Thank you.
All right. So, since we last met, I did a presentation at the Crescent City Women's Club on behalf of the Delmar Solid Waste Management Authority and talked to them about Proposition 67 and Proposition 65, and also had an opportunity on behalf of the city to talk to them about Measure Q, which was good. Did have a Solid Waste Management Authority meeting on the 18th and then another meeting, smaller meeting, ad hoc meeting regarding recycling issues here in our community. Had a LAFCO meeting that afternoon on the 24th, along with Mr. Short, met with our auditor, Mr. Badawi. And I don't think that it can be echoed too many times to tell our finance director, Linda, how good a job she's doing and her staff. He commented on all of you, so I think that you should be recognized for the good work you're doing. On the 28th, I did an interview with KEIM 3 News out of Eureka regarding the Veterans Monument and Measure Q. Veterans Monument made the TV, Measure Q did not, but I guess a Veterans Monument is a little bit, little bit of a.
Flashier.
A little flashier than, than flesh and toilets. But, anyway, it was an honor to do that. And I, I joined Mayor Gastineau with the Noon Rotary on the 3rd, and he said that we would tag-team, which meant that he did the entire presentation and said, "Did you wanna add anything?" And I said, "No." But it was good to go to Rotary and I'm glad that I was a guest, 'cause if you're a member, they just charge you for stuff. I don't know how it works, but it, it seemed expensive. So, I was very glad to be a guest, 'cause you just are asked to stand up and, and the next thing you know, it's 50 bucks. So, it's interesting, but I'm glad that they do that because I, I've seen the, all the things that Rotary, especially our two Rotary Clubs here, have done for our community and the students that they have sponsored and the events that they. So, while I found it somewhat entertaining, I am so thankful for the opportunity to, to visit Rotary and, and say some good words on behalf of the city. I did attend Friday night and was, it was a privilege to do the ribbon cutting at the New Coast Redwoods Art Gallery. I have never seen a pair of scissors that big. They were huge. I mean, they, I'm, I'm thinking that maybe, yes, Mr. Van Mark, they were. I'm thinking that maybe there should have been probably some permits involved in handling those things. But it was really exciting and I went over to Friday Night Live afterwards and I realized that attendance was down over there quite a bit, but as Mr. Van Mark can attest, the gallery was packed. It was standing room only. So, that's really exciting for our, our community to have that new opening. So, and I would encourage everyone to, to vote tomorrow if you have not already voted. So.
Do we have solid music?
Yeah, I said that. I think.
You sure?
I did. Okay, we did. We're, we're so, we're still taking out the trash.
Yeah, and one of the things that many people may not know is that the Coast Redwoods folks are working hard at reaching out to the kids. They had had 50, I think they said.
Yeah.
Students in that day, and some members from their group have gone out to the beach and collected sand dollars. And they had put together kits for kids to make ornaments. So, they had a sand dollar and some ribbon and some markers in little bags that they gave each of the kids. And I, I happened to take my 13-year-old and his friend with us, and they gave each of those young men one of those to take home. And they had a great time just making an ornament.
Yeah.
After that event. And you're right, I think that may have been why there was, there were less people that live from downtown is because they were all, there were at least easily 150 people in that gallery.
Oh, yeah.
It was very, it was nicely attended.
Very impressive. Thank you. And thank you for coming, Mr. Van Mark. It was, it's good, good to see our, our staff represented well. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you. Okay, well, I think the only thing I did was I did the Delmar Solid Waste meeting on the 18th of October. And of course, we did have our special closed session the other day. Halloween was a bust. I think I only got about 12 kids. The weather wasn't helpful, that's for sure. But it's good to see everybody out there having a good time. And let's see, not much else. I do have something here, though. I have to direct our city clerk. Ms. Scott, you listening?
(whistles)
All right.
The mayor's getting ready to speak.
The mayor is getting ready to speak. "You need to place the certification of election results, recognition of outgoing council members, installation of new council members, and selection of mayor and mayor pro tem at the beginning of the November 21st, 2016 meeting."
And I'd like to make a comment really quick that that is assuming that Ms. Northrup is able to certify the results by that meeting. Otherwise, you all are stuck with us for one more meeting.
Which might go into December. So, we have to be back here on the 21st so we can keep these seats warm and then do the exchange and then they get a, they get a vote for their mayor and mayor pro tem. And I'll say, I'll, I'll wait till then to say anything, but it's always been an honor to work with all you people, so. With that, there being no further business, and I'm amazed that we're out of here at this time.
It's amazing.
Yeah, it was pretty quick. Good job, Mr. Taylor. Excellent. We are going to adjourn the city council meeting till the next scheduled city council meeting on November 22nd, 2016. And make sure everybody gets out and votes. If you not vote, you cannot complain. And if you do not vote and complain, I'll be upset. So, all right.[1784.82][1784.82](laughter)